Good evening, everyone. Good evening, South Windsor. Happy New Year. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the South Windsor Town Council to order for Monday, January 3rd, 7:00 PM. There will be a public hearing this evening at 8:00. I'd like us to stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Roll call, please.
Here.
Counselor Kobowski.
Here.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Paterna.
Here.
Mayor Pendleton.
Present.
Deputy Mayor King.
Here.
Counselor Kozakowski.
Here.
Counselor Lydecker.
Here.
And Counselor Gamble.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Lopez, can we have an adoption of the agenda, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the adoption of the agenda. Oh, sorry.
What's the matter? Oh, my remarks, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Gosh, I got a second to speak. A couple of things. One day, one thing I'd like to say is that January 17th in honor of Martin Luther King, of which started his mayor's day of service, this year with the rise in our community with the illnesses and also that I'm still recovering from surgery, I will not be doing the mayor's day of service in the middle of January this year, unfortunately. And that is my birthday, so one year off on my birthday, I think, is okay. But I will determine in the spring when the mayor's day of service will be taking place. But also in honor of Martin Luther King Day, I believe our human, I'm sorry, go ahead. Counselor Erica.
Thank you. So I am the Human Relations Commission Liaison. In honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day, the South Windsor Human Relations Commission will be holding the role of music in social justice movements on Monday, January 17th, which is Martin Luther King Day, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM with keynote speaker Dr. Jeffrey Agbana Green Agbar. He is a widely-known historian with an in-depth knowledge about the evolution of music and culture related to social injustices. It's going to be an informative and interesting evening for us and our community. Commissioners Anita Alango and Carolyn Carey will lead the event. There's also going to be a question and answer portion following the keynote speaker. And speaking with HRC Chair Ritu Goyle, she expressed how much she looks forward to seeing many of us counselors in attendance. And if you have any questions ahead of time for the presenter, you can always feel free to email them to me and I'll make sure they are asked of at the event. It's going to be a Zoom event, held, also recorded, so that those who are unable to attend live, recorded video will be available on the town's website. I'm sure that I'll be sure to share the link with my fellow counselors when it becomes available. It's also going to be on the HRC page and the hope, Mr. Maniscalco, is that we can also put it on the town's website and social media. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, microphone. Let me start over. I'd like to say that today at the mask distribution and the test kit distribution, I was at the event today to watch and to thank and to show support for our staff and our volunteers that were doing a fine job at handing out the test kits and the masks. Unfortunately, you know, there were lines, and that's what happens when you have a distribution. So folks had to sit in a line for a little bit. But Mr. Maniscalco, I hope, can report later as to how much we did today. And it was very cold out there for our staff and our volunteers, but they did a phenomenal job, and I'd like to thank them for the work that they did, not only today, but in preparing for this. Thank you. Okay, agenda, adoption of the agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of today's agenda.
Is there any deletions, additions, changes? Deputy Mayor King.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move on page seven, number 13E, page seven, 13E, to after number 10 on page one, which is after the reports for the committees. And I'd also like to move number 17, which is on page eight, to right after number seven, which is after the public input for items on the agenda. So I'd like to move our executive session, that is number 17 on page eight, to right after number seven, which is on page one, which will still be able to be before our public hearing at 8:00 PM.
Is there a second on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Counselor Gamble, questions? Counselor Kobowski? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, that was, that went faster than I had.
That's okay, go ahead.
So you're saying we're going to go into executive session after public input?
Yes.
Is that what this is? And then we're moving the Michael, the 13E from, from where it is to, to where?
Number 10, after number 10 on the first page.
Before it's from committees. So it'll be all by itself, everything? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and now we have communication, and that carries? All those in favor, okay. Communications report from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize I wasn't able to get you a written report as last week was a bit hijacked with the masks and testing and everything else that's been going on. So tonight, in terms of our COVID-19 report for current numbers, we've had 2,748 total cases in our community, 2,430 are past the time of quarantine, we currently have 256 currently infected, and we have seen 62 individuals pass away. At this point, in terms of staffing, we currently have 14 employees who are infected with COVID-19, probably a little shy of half of that are out of this building specifically. I think, as all of you saw, I sent an email earlier today related to one department that we've had to unfortunately sit dark this evening. We do have some concerns about staffing interruptions moving forward. I just wanted to bring that to all of your attention. We're monitoring that situation very, very closely as we go along. Today's event, first of all, let me start by saying thank you to the staff and volunteers that participated in today's distribution event. It was a pretty serious, heavy lift for all those individuals involved, especially given the temperature outside and the large turnout from the community as a whole. I would say over the last week and even the holiday weekend, it has been extremely difficult for a number of employees as well as volunteers being called up to do an event and then very quickly being turned down to go not do an event and then trying to stand another one up shortly after. At the end of all of it, the town ended up receiving 1,986 total tests. We were given guidance from the state of Connecticut to provide the Board of Education with testing, test kits. We were also provided guidance from the state of Connecticut to provide test kits to first responders as well as daycares. As a result, we provided the Board of Education with 246 tests. Human services, our human services department received 252 tests. We've held back 84 for our first responders. And then finally, we distributed approximately 1,404 tests today. I think overall, once it started moving and people were able to get through, while I think some people waited for a while in line, it did quickly move along once the actual gates at the park opened up. Lastly, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, and I'm hoping to get some feedback from all of you at some point, whether that's tonight or over the next couple of days, regarding a couple of different items, seeing as our numbers are getting to a point where they're so high. I did send an email earlier today to our Director of Public Health, Heather Otis, asking her about specific items and what her recommendation would be related to those. Those will include going back to a vestibule system for the town hall, moving public meetings to virtual meetings, implementing a town-wide mask mandate, and then if any of those were to be implemented, if any of those were to be implemented, what that threshold for when they should be implemented would be and what the threshold would be for them to be removed. Her response was as follows, and I'll read it for you, although all of you have it in your email. "Yes, with the increase in cases, cases locally and throughout the state continuing to rise and with the highest test positivity test rates since the start of the pandemic, it is recommended that services are provided through the vestibule again and as many meetings as possible be held virtually. There is a public health benefit to our staff and the board, commission members of additional protection from people who are unknowingly COVID-positive, asymptomatic carriers, and when a person's vaccination status is unknown during interactions. There is a public health benefit to a town-wide mask mandate if other surrounding towns require the same. If we are the only town to implement the mandate, this will be less effective. As far as implementation threshold, I think we are solidly in the red category with the now infamous DPH chart. That would be my cue that it's time to implement these changes. Just as we did last time, to pull back the mask mandate and start opening up the public, to the public again, at least two weeks in the yellow designation would be my recommendation for removal." I do have a meeting with multiple towns scheduled for, I believe it's tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm not, I'm not clear on which at this point. But I will be meeting with a number of different towns and their town leaders to discuss doing some type of universal mask mandate. So any input or opinions from the council would be certainly appreciated. Moving on to a couple of other items that are not COVID-related. First of all, I wanted to make sure that the council was aware and get on the record that in terms of the MasTech building, which I think we've all heard a number of times about blight issues and things of that nature, we have, the town has started fining the MasTech, the owners of that building for blight. That's $100 a day fine. And also, I have had the opportunity to show that location and talk about that location with a couple developers over the last few weeks. Hoping, and fingers crossed, there's some interest there, and we can try to move forward with something in the not-too-distant future. Additionally, I think if anybody had the opportunity to see, unfortunately, our elevator is not 100% complete yet. The state was supposed to come out last week to come and do an inspection. Unfortunately, due to a COVID sickness, they were not able to do so, and our inspection has been postponed. And then lastly, I think, as all of you remember, about two years ago, we started trying to change over the phone system in this building. It proved to be a lot more difficult than I think we expected it to be due to the age of this building, and I'm pleased to report that that has finally changed over. I'd be happy to answer any questions and hear any input on any of those COVID changes.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. How many masks did we receive? I don't, I do know that you said there was 1,404 test kits distributed. How many masks did we receive?
We received approximately 120,000 masks, and we distributed approximately 100,000 today.
And when did the timeframe, when did the kits run out, at 3:00?
I think it was about 3:00.
3:00? And the masks went until what time?
The last car that went through was 6:02.
6:02, so up till 6:00, great. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Any other questions for the town manager? No questions? No comments?
I do, Madam.
Oh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor King.
The only comment that I had is in regards to, and I just want to be clear, if you wouldn't mind going over again, it sounded like in regards to whether or not there's a mask mandate or not, or vestibule, or something to that effect, would you mind going over the finer points in that, in how she came to that? Or what her recommendations were, I should say.
Well, I mean, I would say that she's got a strong recommendation for doing some type of a vestibule and holding virtual meetings for, for some of the public bodies, doing a vestibule for the town hall so that residents would interact with staff through that vestibule. I would say her, while she has a recommendation for a town-wide mask mandate, I think it's tempered with the idea that doing just a mask mandate in our town is a bit naive and not seeing that residents in our community go and travel to other communities around us. And I think that's what she's referring to in some of her trepidation related to that.
So just to follow up, if I may, Madam Mayor. So essentially, it sounds as if we did the mask mandate, it's obviously more effective if other towns around us did it. Is that, is that?
Correct.
What I'm learning, okay. But otherwise, we would do it for the benefit of South Windsor if we did do it. We're thinking about.
I'm sorry, say the last part again, you would.
If we were to consider doing that, it would be for the benefit of our residents in South Windsor?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I would say I agree with the vestibule approach, and I think that we should be starting to think about going to virtual meetings for certain bodies of commissions and that kind of thing. But as far as mask mandates, like you said, if one or two towns do it, I think that that is ineffective. I think we should be taking our direction, you know, from, you know, the state and the governor. And, you know, if he mandates it, then yes. But to just do it for a town or two, I don't think that's really going to, you know, be effective. And I think it is not what we should be doing at this point.
Any other comments? I think, Mr. Maniscalco, you looking for some direction from our, the council here concerning that?
It certainly would be helpful, especially going into the regional meeting that we're planning to have later this week.
Shall I open up to the counselors? Go ahead.
Sure, I'll start, I'll start the, well, really, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind. So in what I do for full-time living is I talk to businesses, and I talk to companies, and I also talk to residents. However, for South Windsor and even surrounding towns, there is some comments in regards to not so much the mask mandate in regards to the town specifically, but they're more concerned, as many of the owners, business owners, and I could rattle off the ones that I've spoken to, that they've said, you know what, we're not so much, they are concerned about the town, but they're more concerned about their business from the standpoint of their employees. Because if there isn't one, and that's why they have all their employees wear a mask, because they're more concerned about the fact that not so much that the town has a mandate or anything like that, but they can lose business, not because residents are going to another town, but because if somebody gets sick in their business, and I think we've all experienced that, then they have to close their business, even from a morality standpoint. They're looking out for their, their workers as well as for the town. And I think that that's where the concern is more about quote-unquote "losing business," not the fact that residents are going to Vernon or East Hartford or Manchester or whatever. But if somebody gets sick in their business, and again, we've all experienced that, then they close down. And so they're more concerned about, hey, we're doing it with, you know, for the benefit of our employees. So at least, I just wanted to put that out there for the council. It's not so much about the town and business going somewhere else that they're losing business. It's not so much about the town and business going somewhere else that they're losing business, but they're more concerned about how long do we have to shut down? Now I think it's five days or whatever if somebody gets sick because they also care about the community. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor King. Any other comments for the town manager? Councillor Evans?
Thank you. So I guess I'm just looking for some clarity because as much as I love sitting in my car in my driveway for our meetings, you know, I really do like that we keep our meetings non-virtual and that we continue to meet. I do also like the idea of the vestibule for the protection of our employees and to keep the town running. But I'm curious, if we were to put a vestibule in place, would we still be able to hold our meetings in person or would that force us to hold them virtually?
That would probably force you to go virtually.
Is there some kind of in-between that we can look at where people can come into the town building without going into all the offices, like a happy medium to still protect the employees from spread but also still be able to have public access and be able to continue holding our meetings in person so that we can have the public here with us?
I mean, when we did originally take down the vestibule, we did have people coming in. They were in a holding pen, for lack of a better term. And then the individuals that they wanted to meet with would come down and get them and then they would go to whatever department that was to conduct whatever business and then they would go. I would say at that moment in time, we had a higher level of staffing because we had brought all of our staff back, our backup staff, back from the annex. So all the staff were here located in the town hall. Right now, in all honesty, we are very thin and I would be concerned about being able to actually do that because it's fairly labor-intensive.
Because I lean towards whatever we can do to protect our staff, but I still would like to, for our community, be able to hold our meetings in person. Thank you.
Any other, councillor Kobaski?
Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, I know there was a lot of confusion with the state as far as the mask distribution and how many we were going to get and where they were held up. Are you anticipating the state getting any more masks and test kits going forward? And if so, do you know when that might be?
No. We heard, I'm trying to think, earlier on that there may be another distribution of test kits if they were to get them. I have heard some rumblings that the Board of Education should be able to pick up some additional test kits tomorrow. But how many and what, we're not really clear at this point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wish I had more answers myself.
Any other comments? Does that help Mr. Maniscalco to figure out what he needs to do here? Okay, go ahead, Andy, do you have any? No? Mr. Maniscalco, I have a few questions. The first question that I have is the state has now given the towns the authority to do what they need to do within their boundaries, correct?
Correct.
Concerning masks?
Yes.
What is the authority that you have, sir?
The state, the governor assigned an executive order that provides the municipal CEO the opportunity to implement a townwide mask mandate.
Anything else?
The legislature, I believe, has enacted some legislation that allows municipalities to hold virtual or hybrid meetings, I believe, through the end of 2022, I think it is.
Okay. And within our boundaries of our community, well, let me back up for a second. You're not only just the CEO, you're the emergency.
I'm also the emergency management director.
Emergency management director, okay. So, Mr. Maniscalco, if we had a disaster in South Windsor, whose responsibility would it be to look out for the citizens of our community to make sure that they are safe and receiving what they needed?
That would be, that would fall within my job description.
Okay, and you have the staffing of various departments. You have the police department, you have the fire department, you have a public works, you have a sewer department or the water pollution control that can advise you or would advise you, or the health department that would advise you on what would be needed for the citizens' safety.
Correct.
Right? And then you would be able to make that decision on what would need to be done without even having to come to the council and asking us for permission, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So with that said, what I'm leading to is we are ultimately now responsible for the citizens within our community. You have the purview to do that, put on you by the state of Connecticut. And Heather Otis is our director and our expert within the health department and she has our numbers of where we stand within our community, correct?
Yes.
And if you could read her recommendation back, please?
Her recommendation is, "Yes, with the increase in cases locally and throughout the state continuing to rise and the highest test positivity test rate since the start of the pandemic, it is recommended that services are provided through the vestibule again and as many meetings as possible are held virtually. There is a public health benefit to our staff and board-commission members of additional protection from people who are unknowingly COVID-positive asymptomatic carriers and when a person's vaccination status is unknown during interactions. There is a public health benefit to a townwide mask mandate if other surrounding towns require the same. If we are the only town to implement the mandate, this will be less effective. As far as implementation threshold, I think we are solidly in the red category from the now infamous DPH chart. That would be my cue that it's time to implement these changes. Just as we did last time, to pull back the mask mandate and start opening up to the public again, at least two weeks in the yellow designation would be my recommendation for removal."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. And have you heard of any businesses closing because of the mask mandate?
Because of the mask mandate, no.
Okay. And I can say that I have gone into businesses within our community where people are telling me that, or asking if South Windsor is going to a mask mandate. I don't know the answer to that, but they tell me that the folks going in within their businesses are still wearing masks. So it's a great thing that folks are following that and wearing masks at this point to go into other businesses for the safety of the employees and for the remaining, for the businesses to stay open. Case in point, South Windsor Town Hall is a business. Not in a sense of running it as a business, but we are a business that offers a service to our citizens. And having a mask mandate within our structure of our town hall to prevent it from being shut down, like, correct? Okay. So I'm going to have the courage to say, because I know a lot of people out there don't have the courage to say it, but I am listening to the expert, which is Heather Otis. She has the license and the degree. I don't know the numbers, you don't know the numbers. We don't know who's testing. Now we know the numbers because we're being told the numbers. But I've always looked to our staff, which are the experts in this field. And I also am taking responsibility, which we should as councillors and our CEO of our town, for the boundaries within South Windsor. So I will support whatever the director of the health department has to say. And I stand firm with that because that is our obligation and duty to look out for the citizens as a whole within our community. So, Mr. Maniscalco, whatever you choose to do that you see fit, you have my full support with that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Not seeing any? Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Moving on. We have the public input, please, on any items on the agenda.
Maybe I'll change the tone a little bit. Craig Zimmerman, 5 A. Motto Drive, South Windsor. As the chairman of the Board of Education, I wanted to thank the town council for helping provide access to additional funding for the new Pleasant Valley project. I know you have an agenda item tonight on Democracy Day. Your help with Pleasant Valley is a good example of the town council, the Public Building Commission, and the Board of Education working together, which obviously benefits the entire town. With our students coming back to school after the winter break, I wanted to thank Dr. Carter, our administrators, and especially all the teachers and staff in our schools for working so hard every day to keep everybody safe while providing the best possible education to all of the almost 5,000 students. One final comment. With work being started on Pleasant Valley School, this is a great time to remember everybody responsible for our four new elementary schools, including Dr. Carter, all the elected officials, all the school, town, and state officials involved, the building professionals, and especially the voters of our town who showed their strong support for education. You know, I left out one group for acknowledgement, Daria Plummer and her outstanding group of PAC volunteers. It's only fitting that we're here tonight with Daria on her birthday, working together to help the Pleasant Valley project. Please join me in wishing our friend Daria, one of the town's best role models and one of the people most responsible for our new elementary schools, a very happy birthday.
I believe she's here.
Happy birthday, Daria.
Happy New Year. Kathy Carrigan, 1838 Main Street. I'm bringing you something happy, I think, tonight, and I hope easy. Last week, I sent you all a two-page memo with some pictures on it, and it's a picture of a new gateway. We have two gateways right now. One is where 291 comes into Route 5 and the second one is in town center. This proposal is for a third one at the intersection of Route 5 and Sullivan Avenue, which is our major east-west corridor going across town. It's something that a group of citizens have been working on for maybe five years now. And it started, well, I won't give you this. You have a little bit of history in this, but it gives you a picture, a proposed gateway. What we really would like is for you to take a look at it, give us your feedback on it, any comments that you have, and then give us your blessing to move forward with figuring out what construction costs will be. The location is the corner, right opposite the Schweire House, and I hope you've noticed that it's looking really great. It's been leveled, it's been landscaped, it's green, it's a huge improvement. But this will show you more of that information, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Carrigan.
My name is Megan Powell, 23 Woodland Drive. Good evening, members of the council and the public. I am here tonight to speak in favor of Agenda Item 11A, Resolution B, the appointment of Richard Balboni as the alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Over the summer and into the fall, I had the pleasure of serving as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. During my time on this commission, I learned a great deal about the application process and regulations for building and zoning matters in our town. I also got to see firsthand the commission using their collective voice to make decisions to benefit our town. Having served on this commission, I can confidently say that I think Rick would be a great addition to the team. He is a dedicated community member that will use his strong voice to enrich meeting discussions. When I volunteered with him at last year's strawberry festival, I got to see him in action with a team of volunteers working to craft the delicious strawberry shortcakes that we all know and love. At the end of the day, planning and zoning is a group of neighbors volunteering their time to protect the integrity of the South Windsor landscape and make decisions that will benefit the town as a whole. When I have sat in the seats that you all are sitting in right now during meetings and have looked to my left and my right, I did not know if the person sitting next to me is a Republican or a Democrat. I just knew that we are all there as South Windsor residents with the same goal in mind. Please take into consideration my point of view as someone who has actually served as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission and accept Richard Balboni as a next alternate on this commission. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathleen Doherty, I live on 12 Roy Road. I'm here tonight to discuss two items. First of all, I'd like to thank our town manager for bringing up the COVID numbers. I spoke with him about it over the weekend and noticing that our numbers were exceeding 20% and knowing that so many of us would like to take part in our town politics and our town government, either through Planning and Zoning, Board of Education, Town Council, there needs to be an effort that allows an opportunity for people to do so virtually if the meetings are going to be in public. Or, in my opinion, at this point, when the numbers are so high and the infection rate is, the transmission rate is so high that we need to go back to our virtual meetings. What I really like is the fact that there is an end game, which we seem to never have had before, that they talked about if we are two weeks in the yellow, we come back to regular meetings. So I think that we need to discuss the big picture here and not just saying, okay, masks today, but not tomorrow. And then when the numbers are not, you know, well, we weren't wearing masks when we were at 6%, but we're at 4% and still wearing masks. So let's get some uniformity and I think it would help the residents to be more compliant. Although I have to tell you, I do see a lot of compliance when I'm in the stores and things like that. So having that, so that was my first item. So I really would like to thank you for bringing that forward. Next, I'd like to discuss the two Republican appointments, Rick Balboni and Stephanie Weintraub. The mayor had a discussion with councillor Kazakowski, letting her know that the nominations would not be going forward and in fact told councillor Kazakowski that, quote, "The people had spoken and do not wish Mr. Balboni to represent them on planning and zoning." Is this really true or could there be something else? Because let's talk about past precedents. Exactly 20 years ago, in 2001, November, a Democrat ran for planning and zoning, Bart Pasakonis. He lost his bid in the November election and five weeks later, on December 17, 2001, he was nominated by John Kelkey to fill an alternate position on planning and zoning. And he was seated at his first meeting on January 8, 2002. And now he's the chairman of that committee and we are lucky to have him. There are so many examples as we look through history. And indeed, we can look back seven short months ago. Phil Koboski had an unsuccessful bid for town council in November 2019. And yet he was appointed to fill a council seat that was vacated by Audrey Delmicky. It was a unanimous vote, including that of Mayor Pendleton. Rick is a lifelong resident of the town. He will bring a financial experience and a history and be a great addition to planning and zoning. The seats in question are Republican seats. They are ours to fill. The Republican Town Committee put names forward and I urge you to stop the partisan politics in this town and make every effort to bring unity back to this town. Let's go back and look at past precedents. And let's do that for Rick and for Stephanie and have this council do the right thing and have the same foresight they did in 2001 when they appointed Bart as a member of Planning and Zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. There are Matthew Holrico. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of Richard Balboni as well. I believe it was a travesty that they didn't seat him and I hope that that injustice could be righted tonight. How you doing, Caesar? And I've known Rick now for about 47 years. We've been best friends since we first met in kindergarten. Our kids grew up together. We were best men at each other's weddings. We served in the army together. And Rick is a very good person, he's a good man. And he's dedicated his time to this town. He's a mason, he's given a lot of his public service. In fact, I believe he probably has served this town in some capacity or the community more than, or most, more than most people in this room. My one request is that you revisit this and you consider him for this position because I do believe he is a very good person, worthy, and I believe he would be a great benefit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Delmicky here, State Rep. Delmicky.
For the record, Tom Del Nicky, 130 Felton Road. And tonight, I'm speaking pertaining to a number of appointments to boards and commissions that you have on the agenda. But I'd like to talk process and not personality, or people. I joined the Town Council in November 1995, a couple of years back. During that time, I served as the deputy mayor, served a couple of times as mayor. One thing that I can remember succinctly is that during that time, I cannot recall either party not, or should I say, blocking an appointment, or failing to provide a majority vote for an appointment to a board or a commission. And let's face it, we need to be encouraging volunteerism. Volunteers that serve and give their own time on boards and commissions, literally, they are the glue that holds our community together. Without them, things won't get done, people will be discouraged, and quite frankly, if it turns into a situation where folks don't get approved to serve and sit, others will be reticent to want to put their name forward. I truly believe that this council will continue that past practice of endorsing the other party's nominees, because that is in the best interest of the community. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak to that issue. I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to tell what I know of the record on how things occurred, literally from, and I hate to say it, November 1995, to, to this date. And congratulations to the new mayor, congratulations to the deputy mayor, and congratulations to everyone that is sitting on the Town Council today. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak a public input on any item on the agenda?
Hi, Despina Begansky, 133 Cliffwood Drive. This topic has been concerning me since October. My family and I have been residents of South Windsor for nearly 20 years. We moved to South Windsor for the great schools and the community. Even after our kids graduated, we made a conscious decision to stay in town because we love this community. This past election, I was disappointed to see some of the nasty rhetoric that was being shared. As a community that strives to teach our kids, our grandchildren, and our neighbors to be thoughtful, kind, and inclusive, I was so saddened to see some, that some adults felt the need to create political commercials that portrayed lifelong residents of our town in a negative light because of their party affiliation. For the record, I'm not a registered Republican. And unlike some in town, I don't think you supported the insurrection in Washington just because you're a Republican, and just because you teach gun safety, I don't think you should be targeted in an ad post that references the horrific Sandy Hook shooting. Shame on anybody who was involved in that, and shame on the Town Council for not stepping up and saying something, saying we will not tolerate that kind of narrative in our community. We're a better community than this. We ha, we happen to be kind, what happened to being kind to one's neighbors? These individuals are members of our communities, and they have families. One of the individuals I know was misjudged is Rick Balboni. Rick is nothing like these individuals portrayed him. So for the residents of South Windsor, I'd like to describe the side of Rick I'm aware of. Rick is a lifelong resident, lifelong South Windsor resident, who takes immense pride in this town. He's a husband and father of three daughters. One of the things I've come to respect most about Rick is we don't have to agree on all topics. He's willing to also always listen to my perspective on topics, and he'll share his, but never tells me I'm wrong or dismisses my feelings. Rick is the kind of individual you call when your kid's sick at school and you're not, you can't get home in time to pick them up. Rick is the kind of neighbor that leaves work to go pick up your son's prescription at the pediatrician because you can't get home early enough. He's the kind of neighbor you call when you need an extra set of hands. He's not the man that was portrayed in these political posts on social media. As I understand, the RTC has nominated Rick for an open Republican position for planning and zoning. I don't understand why there would be any pushback from the Town Council on that. I looked up the responsibilities of the Town Council, and nowhere did it reference just serving your political party. I would hope you're all serving our entire community. The defamation on both sides to swoon voters cannot be tolerated anymore. The next generation is watching. Let's do better. To our Town Council, you are elected officials, and your job is to act in the best interest of our community. We need you to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corinne Bordwa, Pleasant Valley Road. Since this is the first meeting that I've attended since the election, I'd like to congratulate everyone sitting in front of me. I am grateful for all the members in our community who graciously commit their time and effort to make our town a better place, which is what brings me here today. I was recently notified that our mayor made a comment stating that the majority party was unwilling to vote in two nominated Republicans to serve on commissions in town. I'll start with Rick Balboni, who has been a dedicated member of our community for many years, and is willing to volunteer his precious time and energy to support our town. As a member of the Medical Reserve Corps, he has been helping with things like COVID testing and vaccination clinics to help the health of our community. He is also part of the South Windsor Community Emergency Response Team, which assists with the safety of our community. A similar decision to vote down a Republican nomination was directed towards Stephanie Weintraub, a dedicated nurse and mother in our town who is already positively, positively contributing to town commissions. I think it would be very, very naive to dismiss the fact that this is happening shortly after Rick and Stephanie both filed a complaint to the State Elections Enforcement Commission regarding the apparent incorrect procedural processes used for absentee ballots during the most recent election. It was made very clear to me that this complaint was not intended to overturn or change any of the results from the election, but was filed to make sure that our election procedures are being followed correctly for future elections. Both these residents are dedicated to not only our community, but the integrity of the processes that we use within it. As a business owner, I understand the importance of having and following correct systems and procedures so that business can continue running smoothly. When the amount of absentee ballots suddenly increase drastically in the wake of COVID, it is very important to make sure that the systems that are in place are still working, and they are being followed correctly. I see that as being very responsible. Now supposedly, it was cited that Rick and Stephanie's recent loss in the municipal election was the reason that they would not be voted in, that the town had spoken. But I think it's important to point out the numerous times in the past where people who lost an election got to serve in appointed positions. As Kathy mentioned earlier, Phil Koboski, who's sitting in front of us right now. Thank you, Phil, for your service to this town. Also, in 2017, a candidate withdrew from the election after making such offensive and concerning comments that had made several news stations, only to be voted into the Human Relations Commission just a few short months later. A precedent has been set. If we, if it did not hinder the nominations in the past, I don't understand why it would be a matter of concern here and now. Andy, as deputy mayor at the time during 2017, with the candidate withdrawal and following appointment, you were quoted saying, "How long do you intend on punishing someone for their mistake?" Now, I'm not aware of any type of mistakes of this sort that either of these nominated Republicans have made, other than the fact that they simply have different opinions than some of you. My question is, is does that make them unqualified to serve on these commissions? Is diversity of thought really such a bad thing? Aren't we here to support each other, unite as neighbors, and keep the focus on what's best for our town, and not make decisions based on our personal likes and dislikes of others? I invite all of you to stay open-minded towards others, especially those that you may not know. If you are going to vote against either of these nominations, I ask that you have the courage to express why, to be transparent in your decisions, and to have these discussions openly during Town Council meetings, and not just behind closed doors. Later, later on the agenda tonight, you are acknowledging January 6th as United Democracy Day, where the South, the town of South Windsor and its leaders are committed to guiding, fostering, and demonstrating peaceful and respectful communications among each other, and in keeping the ideals of our country alive within our community. I hope you mean that. And lastly, in regards to the comments, considering the idea of another town-wide mask mandate, I would caution you to doing so without being able to cite the true source where you have the authority to do so. Last time, Michael and Heather Otis, they cited Executive Order 13A. If they are still using Executive 13A, Executive Order 13A, then I would encourage all of you to read through that very carefully, because the worded included does not give the town manager the authority over private businesses. The wording gives him the authority on places under his ownership or control. The definition that separates the public and the private sector is ownership and control. So no, I don't believe that the, the town manager has that authority. And I did confirm that with my attorney. So once again, I would caution you to move for, about moving forward with that, because I do believe that you would be putting the town in legal jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne.
My name is Mike Mondo, 67 Cornerstone. I really wasn't planning on speaking today, but after what I watched in the past year with the elections and learning that you want to withhold the nomination, I thought I had to speak up. You should really start listening to the people that actually show up and attend these meetings and speak up. I'll be blunt and simple. You don't have to be afraid of these people just because they sit on a different party. It scares me that you want to use your powers to dictate who you want in. These individuals love this town. I know Rich personally. He wants nothing but good. But just because he stepped up, you guys are gonna block him. I just think that is just poor. As regarding to the town manager, today's handout of masks and tests, at 2:15, the line was all the way down past Griffin Road, past the golf course. You had good intentions, but horrible planning. You guys have no, how many buses were delayed today? And the conflict that caused kids getting home from school? I think it was a horrible time. Back to the mask mandate, I kind of find it comical that half the town hall is out with COVID. You have a mask mandate, they're vaccinated, but yet you're now gonna employ and tell us how we should go about our business on a daily basis. I don't think it's working for you, I'm not sure you have the right to tell us how it's gonna happen. As regarding businesses, if the business is afraid of their employees, like Apple, they mandate the mask, their employees wear a mask. They're safe, they're protected, they're vaccinated. But now you're gonna tell me what I have to do? I understand my risks, and I think by putting that back into place is a huge mistake. Allow the people to make their decisions based on the information that they have. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Manilli, 326 Cory Brook Drive, South Windsor. This is my very first time I've ever spoken on this side. As many of you know, I'm not a very political person. However, I do believe that people who want to volunteer in this town should be given a chance to. I believe in fairness. I believe that if somebody has made a mistake, or did something that you don't agree with, and that you need to, like, we need to get past it. If you have, if you have a political view, that's fine, but to just block somebody from wanting to volunteer in this town, who has given already so much to this town, I just don't know if that's the right message you want to send. So I hope that you'll consider wholeheartedly the comments that people here have made, and if somebody from a different party has been vetted and nominated to perform tasks on a committee, I, I think that it should be allowed. I don't think one party should be able to nix another person from doing that. Maybe he didn't win the election, but he's still willing to serve the community in the same kind of venue that he, he actually lost from. I think that takes a lot of courage, in my opinion, and I know him personally, and I think that he can do a lot of good for this town. And I don't think it's right for it to be blocked, just because you may not agree with every single thing he does. There, there's some things he does that I don't agree with either, but that doesn't mean I don't think he should be so, sorry, Rick. But that, but that, it just goes to prove that you can still do good for the town, even though you don't agree with every single thing they do. So thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Just a reminder, at 8 o'clock, we have a public hearing.
I'll be, I'll be quick.
No, you're good.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dave Koss, 48 Dawn Drive. I moved here 25 years ago, chose to raise my family in South Windsor, I love the town. I am also here on Rick's behalf. I personally know Rick, really good guy. And I also, I might, may not be quite as eloquent as some of the others with prepared remarks, but I believe he, he would do well for the town as well. So I hope you see to put him on the appointment. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name's Stephanie Weintraub. I live at 155 Skyline Drive. I'm here tonight to discuss my nomination for a seat on the Public Building Commission, a seat that was vacated by a long-term Republican, Carol Kelly. Over the holiday break, I was notified that this evening, the Town, the Town, the Council Democrats would be removing my name from consideration and voting against my nomination. When I was asked why, I was told there was no reason given. This seems to go on, this seems to go against the democratic process as well as the past precedent. As stated earlier, this is a seat that belongs to a Republican. The Republican Town Committee duly nominated me to fill this seat. If there is a reason to deny my membership to this fully voluntary board, I ask to be provided the reasons and allow me to address concerns. Unilateral voting against an individual is wrong. As you are all aware, I had an unsuccessful bid for a seat on South Windsor Board of Education at the last election by a mere 33 votes. Having lived in a town for only three, this town for only three years, I am grateful to have gained this community's support that I did throughout this election. Republicans have the right to choose their representation on appointing boards and commissions. Discriminating against individuals and censoring people over difference of political opinion is wrong, and not the inclusive environment that South Windsor is claiming to be. Differing opinions is what forces people to work together for the common good of a community. Differing opinions and the ability to work together for the greater good of a community is what makes a community great. I encourage all of you to remember that we are not, we are not Republicans and Democrats, we are neighbors. We are individuals who care deeply about our community, and we are individuals who would like to serve our community and work for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weintraub. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Carolyn Carey, 215 Abbey Road. I just want to say that I too agree that both Rick and Stephanie should be considered. I work on the Human Relations Commission with Stephanie, and she's fantastic on that board, really enjoy having her, and I think all of the people that are on that board would agree with me that she does a great job. So, you know, I just don't think that this town should be that political, that we arbitrarily blackball people from positions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing that we're so, okay, come on up.
I'll be quick.
Sure.
I think I got two and a half minutes, I can do my speed talk. Hi, Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. Three quick things, with respect to virtual meetings, I am against any recommendation to stifle the residents' voices, you know, in the form of a virtual public hearing or a virtual meeting. It's bad enough that, once again, an agenda item is moved at the last minute, or amended at the last minute to move executive session up when there are so many here, 12, or 11 at my last count, soon to be 12, speaking or here to see what happens with respect to a certain item on the agenda, specifically 11A and B. Second, Democracy Day. Also here to speak on item 13D, United Democracy Day, bad news. I looked on Google right before I came here, South Windsor didn't go viral last year with the, when the majority party pitched last year to hold a United Democracy Day. Interestingly enough, I didn't even find anything, any other reference to a United Democracy Day, other than what South Windsor, the majority party in charge at the time, did. What I did find was reference to the International Day of Democracy, September 15th. If you look it up on the United Nations, it is every year on September 15th. Granted, it is between two of your meetings, your town council meetings, but then again, last year's pitch for United Democracy Day took place after the event. So, I don't think there's any reason that you couldn't actually pick a better day. I mean, what happens 10 years from now? What happens if Congress or the Senate, what if they decide to actually change, make, what is it, make Election Day or rename it United Democracy Day? Actually, I saw that was a pitch in 2005. That would be a little awkward. And then finally, I'd like to point out the comments made by Kathy, Tom Del Nicky, Corinne Minnealy, and Stephanie with specifically with respect to Rick and Stephanie's appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to suspend the public input at this point. Is there, well, first, is there anyone else that needs to speak in the public input or would like to speak in the public input? Just asking before we move on to the public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else? Not seeing anyone, we'll move on.
Madam Mayor, we do have five letters to read into the record.
Then what we'll do is, if I can get a motion to suspend the rules, to take a recess with our public input, to go to our public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Could you please read the notice for the public hearing?
To be published in the Journal Inquirer, December 30th, 2021, Legal Ad Town of South Windsor. Notice is hereby given that the Town of South Windsor Town Council has set Monday, January 3rd, 2022, at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Ave., South Windsor, Connecticut, for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the transfer of $1.2 million of the appropriated funds and any expended bond proceeds related thereto from the Orchard Hill Elementary School project and $1.6 million of the appropriated funds and any expended bond proceeds related thereto from the Philip R. Smith Elementary School and Eli Terry Elementary School to the Pleasant Valley Elementary School project to provide for additional contingency for the Pleasant Valley Elementary School project, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, this 30th day of December 2021, attested to by Catherine Senter, Executive Assistant.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in the public hearing concerning the transfer of these funds? Please come up.
Birthday girl.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Pendleton, Deputy Mayor King, members of the town council. My name is Daria Plummer. I live at 235 Orchard Hill Drive. Yes, it is my birthday today. I am here tonight to thank you for your continued vision and support for our school system, most pointedly at this time for the children, the staff, and the parents at Pleasant Valley Elementary School through your resolution of new business item A. I also wish to thank you for your understanding and acknowledgement of the issues facing the pandemic-related construction cost increases for our new PV school. Passage of new business item A, the resolution approving the transfer of the $2.8 million that you've just read, is coming from the previously concluded elementary school projects where we rebuilt, rebuilt Orchard Hill, Eli Terry, and Philip R. Smith, and it brings home equity and education to and for our Pleasant Valley children, their families, and our entire community, all of whom have waited so very, very patiently for this final new school. Bringing this project to conclusion on time is to the economic benefit of our entire town, but most especially, it is for the benefit of the PV children, their learning and their safety conditions, which are ever so critical today. I'd like to close on a very personal note, not just my birthday. I have been on this journey for new elementary schools since we have recognized, long before the 10-year plan was even conceived or adopted, that new schools were needed. I have been teaching in South Windsor, or I taught in South Windsor, beginning in 1967, when we had new schools, and we even had an older school back then called Wapping. In the late 1990s, when I was in leadership with the State Teachers Education Association, I saw firsthand what new schools could provide, both in Connecticut and throughout the country, and what we here could not provide due to age-related building limitations. We were long overdue when Phase 1 was proposed in 2013 and passed in 2014. So, I'd like to close today with a birthday request. I am 78 today, and my greatest gift, my greatest gift would be an unanimous approval by this town council for new business item A. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer. Is there anyone who else would like to speak in the public hearing concerning the transfer? Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. Bill Myers, 1141 Strong Road, South Windsor. I grew up in South Windsor. I went to Wapping School. I raised my kids in South Windsor. They went K through 12 here, and then I had the pleasure and honor to teach for 25 years at Pleasant Valley Elementary School. I never went there, but my wife did. Anyway, it is a wonderful thing that we have this opportunity to transfer these monies to take care of Pleasant Valley School. Unseen costs do arise, but it is a wonderful thing that we have these two sources of money to move over, to slide over, to finish this job. I'll just say personally, I was the treasurer for four referendum on these new schools. You may not remember the first one, which included money for all schools all at once, and that didn't go through. But this 10-year plan was amazing, and it had support of 75% of the people in town. And I'm sure 75% or far more than that would approve of and want this to go on. And so, I thank you for your support, and I highly encourage you to pass that measure tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in the public hearing concerning the transfer of the funds? Second time, anyone else would like to speak? Going a third time, anyone else would like to speak? Not seeing any, the public hearing will be closed, but I'd like to take a straw poll vote. All those in favor of the transfer of the funds to fund Pleasant Valley School development, please raise your hand. Give me one second. Somebody help me count, please. 25 is what I have. I got 25, I think, total. A lot. Okay, 25, sorry. Is there anyone not in favor of the transfer of the funds? Not seeing any? That was easy. Thank you. Okay, and I'd like to close the public hearing. Thank you for all your input. Counselor Lydecker?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point in time, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, and if we could, move 13A with regards to the resolution approving this transfer to after the conclusion of public input.
Awesome. Thank you, Counselor Lydecker. All those in favor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any? So, we'll open back up to the public input, please. Is it, let me, Counselor, may I ask if there's anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in the public input concerning anything on the agenda? Not seeing any? Go ahead. Counselor Merrick? Go ahead.
Okay, we have a few letters to read into the record. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, I believe five total, but I'll start with the two that I have. First one, from Mr. Wayne Kilborn, 291 Smith Street. It reads, "Please vote affirmative to place Mr. Richard Balboni as an alternative on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Balboni is a stand-up citizen for the Town of South Windsor. To deny his approval would be, would be for pure political reasons. The current mayor made it clear that Mr. Balboni's nomination would not be approved. What are the Democrats on the town council afraid of? This town needs talent and dedicated people like Mr. Balboni to volunteer their time to serve on commissions. As an alternate, this position is the best training ground for advancing to be a member of the commission." Thank you, Wayne Kilborn. Second letter I have is from Mr. Miguel Proano, 41 Beechwood Lane, to whom it may concern, I am writing in support of the following two individuals. Richard Balboni has been nominated to the alternate seat on P&amp;Z. Mr. Balboni has been responsible, responsibility of serving our community as a constable. He has served in the military and has grown up in South Windsor. He would be a good addition to this position as he has business experience in the heart of our community in mind. Also, Stephanie Weintraub, who was nominated for the open position on the Public Building Committee. Ms. Weintraub has tirelessly advocated for parents and students of South Windsor, and during this time, while PVC is currently overseeing the final phase of construction of one of our elementary schools, she will continue that effort. Please consider these two individuals for the open positions as we continue to pride ourselves in the open, transparent, and inclusive dialogue that is our local government, where all residents have a say and both sides are represented. Sincerely, Miguel Proano.
Thank you. This one is from, a letter from Stephanie Dexter. Dear Town Councilors, I am writing to give my endorsement for Richard Balboni as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have him on tonight's consent agenda, Section 11AB. Rick ran in this year's November municipal election for a spot on P&amp;Z and lost by less than 100 votes. He has agreed to fill the alternate vacancy we currently have. Rick has a background in finance, which no one else on the commission has, so he would be an asset in that regard. Please do the right thing and approve the first reading for this much-needed appointment. Signed, Stephanie Dexter, current member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, 15 Larkspur Lane, South Windsor." And I have one more letter. It's a little bit longer, so it's from Mark De Nicolò. Excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Mark. I would like to take the time to provide a statement about the person I have known for many decades as a resident of South Windsor, Richard Balboni Jr., Rick. And I first became friends in the first grade at Wapping Elementary School back in 1976. We were both redistricted to Orchard Hill in the third grade, and we continued our education in the same South Windsor schools each year thereafter until we both graduated in 1988. Rick has lived his entire 51 years of his life here in South Windsor, has put all of his children through our school system, opened a business with his wife here in town, and as you all know, has expressed his interest in becoming more of an integral part of this town by serving its residents in government. Rick does just that. He serves those who are most important to him, from his family first and foremost, his church, St. Margaret Mary, to serving his country back in 1988 through 1994 in the Connecticut National Guard. We are lucky to have this man as a resident of this town with respect to this character trait. Professionally, his character and skillset is just as impressive. Many do not know the extent of what is housed in that skull of his. A genius? Maybe. I'm not sure. A math whiz? For sure. Since we were kids, Rick has excelled in the field of mathematics, beyond the comprehension of anyone sitting in this room, I would assume. A fantastic critical thinker, from our days in high school as the captain of the math team and future business leaders of America to our days together at UConn, a remarkably unbelievable skillset he possesses. Rick has taken this gift with him to have a very successful career as a comptroller for a few companies here in Connecticut over the years. While I can continue on in this statement with many personal opinions I have of Rick, which coming from my longtime friend, I will spare you all the time it will take to go through all of those positive, inspiring adjectives and refrain from sharing those with you as it will most likely labeled as bias. But I will continue in another direction. We all have opinions of people, many that are derived from hearsay, many from observation, many now from a simple browse or what is termed a creeper search on the internet. This is not the basis of my opinions of Rick. I know this man well. I am not sure how much any of you actually know Rick or have simply derived their opinions of Rick solely on the basis of what I just described. But if you really do not know this man and have not had an intellectual conversation with him, I would beg to differ on some of those opinions, I'm sure. The people have spoken, is what I have heard as Mayor Pendleton's stance on excluding Rick from this alternate P&amp;Z position. Honestly, I don't recall that we did vote on any alternate P&amp;Z positions, only the available commission positions as described on our ballots. Alternate positions are appointed by their parties committee in the case of a resignation. Sounds like just another opinion to me, and I do not believe our people have spoken, Mayor Pendleton, and others on the town council. Our residents of South Windsor deserve to have the smartest, most highly skilled, critical, excuse me, thinkers who have also been in positions of serving others throughout their lives, in positions within this town. As a bonus, wouldn't it be great to have lifelong loyal residents of South Windsor with 25-plus years of applicable, relevant professional experience to serve on our P&amp;Z team? I'm sure you would agree with that statement. That person is a glaringly obvious person here before you this evening, Richard Balboni Jr. Our residents deserve this man's dedication to South Windsor and all that he can bring to this position. Thank you once again for including this statement into item number seven. All the best, Mark De Nicolò. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Kibaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is from Billy Carroll, 188 Scott Drive. I support the nomination of Rick Balboni as alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Balboni is a solid choice to fill this position. Rick has volunteered as a constable in town for many years. He is also on the Executive Committee and Deputy Treasurer of the South Windsor Republican Town Committee. Rick ran for the Planning and Zoning Commission in the recent election, but unfortunately lost. The alternate position will allow him to gain experience on the commission, and he hopes to be successful on the next go-around. I have personal experience with this. I was originally appointed to the P&amp;Z and then had a successful election soon afterwards, and I feel that this helped me gain the experience and understanding of what it takes to be a solid commissioner. I served on P&amp;Z for six years and then was elected town councillor where I served two years. Thank you for your consideration, Billy Carroll.
Thank you, Counselor Kibaski. Anything, any other comments that need to be read or letters need to be read? Not seeing any? We'll move on to Counselor Paterna for 13A. On page five. I'm sorry?
Point it where?
Yeah, right here. That's the resolution for the school. Do you have it?
Yep.
Okay. Here, take mine.
Item 13A, resolution approving the transfer of $2.8 million from the Orchard Hill Elementary School, Philip R. Smith Elementary School, and Eli Terry Elementary School projects to Pleasant Valley Elementary School project. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the transfer of $1.2 million of the appropriated funds and any expended bond proceeds related thereto from the Orchard Hill Elementary School project and $1.6 million of the appropriated funds and any expended bond proceeds related thereto from the Philip R. Smith Elementary School and Eli Terry Elementary School to the Pleasant Valley Elementary School project to provide for additional contingency for the Pleasant Valley Elementary School project.
And there's, I hear it's a second? And is there any discussion, please?
Mayor Pendleton, I'd just like to add that this is...
I'll just take my notes.
Yep.
My agenda.
Thank you. This is a 10-year project that combined the efforts of the Board of Education, Superintendent of Schools, Town councils over the past 10 years, two town managers, the superintendent and the administrative staff of the school system, the Public Building Commission, and the voters. This community has come together, and this is, to me, the right move at this time to support the completion of this project. So I'm going to support this vote tonight with a yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paterna. Are there any other comments? Counselor Kowalski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my support for a resolution to transfer the excess appropriations from the previous three elementary school projects to the Pleasant Valley Elementary School project. I believe the increase was anticipated, and the, in the dark result of the pandemic, this approach to help properly fund the project seems reasonable. This project is too big and too important to fail. Let's do whatever we can do now, before the situation gets worse and more difficult to resolve. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Kowalski. Anyone else with any comments? I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Ed, Dr. Carter, the Public Building Commission, builders, developers, our town staff, working with bonding, to make this happen and to save funds from the other schools with the development and the building of this. And I think that's good, and I think we are in support and ready for a vote. So all those in favor for this resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Happy birthday, Ms. Plummer. That's your present from the town. There you go. Go ahead. Deputy Mayor King, please.
Yes, I just wanted to, as a point of order, we moved number 17 to right after number seven, but obviously in regards to all the comments that were made, I just wanted to bring it back to the executive session, number 17. So I'd like to invite the town manager, Michael Mazzco, the assistant town manager, Ms. Perry, assistant town manager, Mr. Roberts, as well as Attorney Corella, any other appropriate personnel to discuss the pending litigation, 460 Mill Road pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-210B4 and 1-2006E at this particular time.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any? Okay. For public's interest, we will be going into executive session, but we will come out to continue our meeting. But we will be meeting with the attorney right now. Thank you.
I'd like to call the South Windsor Town Council meeting back to order. And, uh, number eight, Deputy Mayor King.
Yes, I'd like to move for the adoption of the minutes of previous meetings be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following town council meeting, regular meeting minutes of December 20th, 2021, and the public hearing minutes of December 20th, 2021.
Is there a second? All those in favor, any additions, deletions, corrections? Not hearing any? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilor Kozakowski.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I was unable to attend that meeting on the 20th, but I did have the opportunity to watch the video recording and review the written minutes. So, I do want to offer a friendly amendment to Section 13I that discusses the Park and Recreation Temporary Committee membership. It's on page 11 of the minutes. It lists the resolution that was created by the council on December 6th. You might remember that at that meeting on the 6th, we made several amendments to the resolution prior to adopting it. None of those amendments were captured in these minutes. I looked back at the December 6th minutes, and the amendments were perfectly recorded there, so... So, these minutes should be corrected to include those amendments. Otherwise, I'm uncomfortable approving the minutes.
And just to be clear, it's the amendments that we made to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, correct? The sentence that was worked on together, so we need to have those amendments reflected in the new minutes. Thank you. And is there a second on accepting those? Correction, second? All those in favor? Aye? Didn't know if we needed a vote for that, but I just wanted to make it legal. Just did it anyways. So, thank you, thank you for that. Is there any other corrections to the minutes that anyone has seen? Not seeing any? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Not seeing any? The motion carries. Thank you, Councilor Kozakowski. Item number nine, any communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible with the council? Not seeing any? It was a holiday... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On December 14th, the Planning Zoning Commission continued a public hearing for zoning text amendments and a modification to the Evergreen Walk general plan to accommodate a new multifamily development that includes 165 new residential units. So, that was a continuance of that public hearing. The commission later approved a modification of an existing daycare at Evergreen Walk to allow pre-K and early childhood programming. They also approved a new restaurant, which will be a Shake Shack at Evergreen Walk. Lastly, just going back a little bit, on December 7th, the commission denied the warehouse and distribution facility on Talbot Road and Governor's Highway. I do want to acknowledge that an appeal was taken by the applicant, but I don't have any comments on that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? Not seeing any? We'll move on to item number 10, reports from committees. Not seeing any. Moving on to 13E. What? What's that? Oh, sure. I think we did that at the last meeting. Have we met since then? Again? I don't believe we did. I did it at the last meeting, yeah. I'm sorry. 13E?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
11? Did I... Did we move 11? I think we're up to 11A.
Excuse me, we up in the adoption of the agenda, we moved 13E after number 10.
I thought he... Oh, there's two 13s, sorry.
Right.
There's two 13s, so I was confused.
So, 13...
13, the 13E on page 7, okay.
13E on page 7.
Not the 13E on page 3.
I know, I don't... It's okay, we're gonna have to work with our numbering and lettering system in this one. So, we are now on page 7, 13E, please. And that is Councilor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution, accepting the resignation of Michael LeBlanc from the Park and Recreation Commission. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts with regret the resignation of Michael LeBlanc from the Park and Recreation Commission effective December 18th, 2021, and be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council extends its thanks to Michael LeBlanc for the time he has dedicated to serving his community by his membership on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Uh, Councilor Evans?
I just wanted to also thank Michael LeBlanc for his service, being the liaison to the Park and Rec Commission. I saw a lot of the work and the discussions that he was involved with on the commission. It really was appreciative and beneficial to the town, so thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, for your time and service in volunteering for our town. Thank you. And all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Okay, now we go back to... 11 on page 2, 11... And that is Councilor Gamble.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself from this item because I am related to one of the persons being appointed to a position.
Absolutely. Please make note on the record. Deputy Mayor King? Hang on. Okay. Councilor Gamble?
Ready to read?
Yes.
Motion to approve agenda items 11AA through 11AG as a first reading on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor King?
If I could, Madam Mayor, I would like to move items due to the different conversations that have happened today, I'd like to move items 11AA and 11AB off of the consent agenda to new business.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, can I have a roll call, please? Councilor Evans?
Yes.
Councilor Lydecker?
Yes.
Councilor Gamble?
No.
Councilor Lopez? Councilor Kozakowski? Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Councilor Kobolski?
No.
Councilor Paterna?
Yes.
And Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
Can I have a count, please? We have two noes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 yeses. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to the... What Councilor Gamble had read? Yes, we're getting there right now. So, seeing that the two were moved to the new, we have item C, which you can go ahead and that is still up here. It was 11AA through 11AG, so that's still included in there, so we don't have to read that separately. So, all those, is there any discussion on the 11AA, 11G, 11AG? Councilor Paterna?
Nope.
Is there any? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries. Okay, and moving on to 13... Oh, let me get there, 13H. Councilor Lydecker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, first, motion to approve agenda items 118H through 11AK as a first reading on the consent agenda. However, if I may, H has a Scrivener's error in it. It's a resolution reappointing Peter Anthony, yet in the actual paragraph underneath it states Renee Powell. So, I would just ask if we can make sure that the meeting minutes reflect that the resolution is reappointing Peter Anthony to the Patriotic Commission, not Renee Powell. Thank you.
Thank you for that observation. And is that understood by the clerk? Thank you. And is there a second? And any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Not seeing any? The motion carries. And that was through AK. Now, we are on 11B for the second reading. Councilor Evans?
Motion to approve agenda items 11BA through 11BB as a second reading on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? And is there any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any. Item 11C? Not any miscellaneous? None? We good? You good? Okay. Okay, now we're on page 5, which actually should be... Okay. Now, we're on 12A, the discussion item for the illicit discharge ordinance. Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your pocket, there's another version of the illicit discharge ordinance that we provided to all of you. I think we heard from Councilor Lydecker at the last meeting that there were some concerns, and I think some others had some concerns related to the large amount of discretion that that ordinance probably would have provided to the town staff in terms of searching for illicit discharge and other things of that nature. We did provide you a different version that was passed. I believe it was passed by the Town of Lisbon. This was recommended by our town attorney in doing that. And then, I know we received some additional questions related to that that I was able to get back out to all of you today from the town... With answers to those questions from the town attorney today. So, I guess it's really going to be how the council would like to move forward with it and handle it. We can do basically however you guys would like it to be. This is certainly your ordinance at the end of the day, so...
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Councilor Lydecker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. I do appreciate... I know my questions were extensive last time. Again, my biggest concern was just allowing a member of our town staff open entry into a citizen's home, and that was concerning to me because this is our property rights. So, this really does address quite a few of my concerns. I received this sitting at my table today when I came in. I think with a couple tweaks in here with regards to that Section 10B1, as well as just affirming that... affirming that or allowing the appeal into the Superior Court as well. I appreciate, you know, exhausting the administrative remedies, that's the first thing the Superior Court's gonna say. But again, these are our homes, so I don't think we should be precluded to go up to the Superior Court. So that does still need to be in there. Other than that, I'm significantly more comfortable with the way that it's coming out. So just a couple more tweaks, and I would be on board with this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so I have a few questions and suggestions probably for the town manager and public works director. Is he here?
Unfortunately, the public works director's not here due to some challenges with his family, but we do have Mr. Doolittle here.
Okay. I'm sure he'll do fine. Okay, so I did see the written response to Counselor Lydecker's questions, which cleared up a few of mine. I apologize for not sending these questions ahead of time, but... Well, here they are. So in section 3, applicability, or maybe in some other section, is there a state statute that can be referenced that authorizes the town to create this designed enforcement agency and that gives them this police and enforcement powers that are outlined in this ordinance?
The town, this is Jeff Doolittle, town engineer. Thank you. The town is mandated to establish a stormwater ordinance by the State Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection, MS4, municipal storm separate sewer system permit. So that permit mandates the town establish the legal authority to stop any illicit discharges.
Okay, so the authority comes from the MS4?
Comes from the permit, yes.
In section 4, responsibility for administration, references consultation with the first selectman, should that be the town manager or somebody else?
Correct, that was an artifact of the previous version, so we... I think if you saw the responses, that would be probably changed to the town manager.
Okay, okay. It also mentions the town engineer and public works personnel. Does participating in this enforcement agency add to the duties of the position? And if so, would this possibly require revision to their job descriptions?
It is, it could be extra duties. I don't know.
Yeah, it could be kind of extra... Maybe extra duties, but I think they're kind of already managing a lot of the MS4 things as it is already, so I don't think it's gonna impact too much. Let me... Let me get back to you on that, though.
So this could be a new way of doing something that they're actually already doing?
Probably already doing.
We're not actually doing this fully yet, so this is more fully doing this activity.
Okay. Section 8, suspension of stormwater drainage system MS4 access. This section talks about suspending discharge access to individuals who violate the ordinance. Can you walk me through a scenario when this power could be exercised? My initial thoughts would be if discharge of stormwater into its appropriate or designed system was suspended or blocked, it could cause a list of other problems elsewhere in the area as far as drainage goes.
Right. So the only reason we would use that section is if somebody was conducting an illicit discharge, in other words, they were dislaging something that would be considered pollutant into the stormwater system. And we are mandated to stop that. If they refuse to stop, we can physically block off their discharge pipe so that pollutant doesn't go into the stormwater system, which in turn goes into the waters of the state. That's where this all comes from.
Okay, so it's just the pollutant and not just...
Not just any discharge.
Well, if they're... Okay, so if they're spilling something into their stormwater system that connects to the town, you have to... How do you stop them from just blocking the pollutant from coming in?
Well, we would if... And this would be an extreme measure. We would stop up the pipe so it didn't come into the town system, and they would be responsible for cleaning out that pollutant from their system.
Under section 12, wetlands and water course protection, and there's also a reference to water courses in section 11, how does this ordinance complement or conflict with the duties of the Wetlands Agency? And I'll just follow up. Before any ordinance is brought forward for adoption, I'd like to see written comments and/or recommendations from the Inland Wetlands Agency.
It's entirely independent of the functions of the Wetlands Agency.
Completely independent.
Works in conjunction with them, and that the Wetlands Agency is responsible for protecting the wetlands and water courses of the town. This further enhances that and that we're trying to prevent pollutants from getting into those water courses and wetlands. But they're independent, they're separate tracks.
All right, so if there's pollutants going into the wetland, it would go to this enforcement agency first?
It could go into either, depending on if there was a wetlands permit. If there's a wetlands violation, the Wetlands Commission would take it up. If it's coming from an illicit discharge of stormwater, it could also be taken up through this mechanism.
Okay, so those would be a case-by-case scenario?
Right.
Under section 14, enforcement, do you feel like... Or the public works director feel like you have the time and resources to be able to comply with these enforcement requirements and schedules? Can you fit this in?
At this time, yes. We haven't had very many of these instances. We don't expect to have a lot of these instances to have to enforce.
Okay, good. That's reassuring. Appeals, section 15. I see that hearing officer is a defined term in an earlier section, but like who is this hearing officer person? How are they chosen? Are they part of the agency, enforcement agency? Is it somewhere else, someone else?
I believe that's addressed in the sample ordinance.
Since it's a defined term, but it's somewhat vague.
I don't have the most recent version, but I thought the hearing officer or the appeal actually went to myself.
It would be to...
What the original ordinance had in it.
What page are you seeing that on with the term in?
The definition of hearing officer is on page 2. The section is on page... Section 15, page 10. No, I'm sorry, page 12, page 11, excuse me. C, I'm at page C2. The first time it appears, it says the hearing officer shall conduct the hearing not less than 15 or more than 30 calendar days of the receipt of the request. I just say, I think this ordinance would be better suited if it outlined who this person was and how they're chosen or, you know...
Do you have a preference to how that?
Do I have a preference?
Yeah.
Off the cuff, I would think it would be a third-party type person. I don't think...
That the town would pay?
If it should be somebody... I don't think it should be somebody that would be on the enforcement agency, but...
I agree with you on that.
So I'm sure we can identify somebody that could, you know...
By third-party, do you mean like an independent third-party that we would pay to be a hearing officer, or are you referring to like town staff?
That could be a strategy, or if there's somebody that's can be identified as a expert or that's, you know, knows enough about this process and illicit discharges to be able to make a fair assessment of both the action and the situation. And that's it. Thanks for indulging me.
Are we... Any other comments? Okay. So, Mr. Maniscalco, thank you, Mr. Doolittle, for coming in. Mr. Maniscalco, with the discussion item, are you gonna take any more of these questions or suggestions?
I can from the council. If people have any additional comments, we'll try to rework this a little further and bring it back again and see where we are.
Great, and I believe that microphone is on next to you, Mr. Maniscalco.
Nope, that's the reflection.
A reflection, gotcha, thank you. I know, that's why I don't see you, Counselor Kozakowski, because it looks like a reflection. So, Nate, you're good. So if anyone else has any comments on this, if they could send them to Mr. Maniscalco so he can rework this and get this back to us and have it as another discussion item on our January 18th meeting? Yes? Thank you. Okay. And then now, moving on to 12B is a discussion item, the ARPA funds. And Counselor Paterna, however, I'm gonna refer that, if you don't mind if I could... Oh, go right ahead.
No, no, you go, you start.
I was just going to ask Counselor Lydecker to... Is that okay? Okay, Counselor Lydecker, if you'd like to have a conversation with that, if you reviewed everything that was sent to us? Do you have any input on that for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did review the documentation that was sent to us. I'm curious, because I thought at the last meeting there was some questions about what other towns have done. So the paperwork that you provided us, is this essentially a draft that you created, or is this the documents from the other town and you just created them to South Windsor?
Correct. So we reached out to the Town of East Windsor, which has implemented a program similar to this with their ARPA funds, got their documents, modified them to work for the Town of South Windsor, and provided them to you as a draft version to review.
And is South... Is East Windsor the only town around us at this time doing this small business grant?
That I'm aware of.
Okay. I know you had in here, one of the things that caught my eye was that you believed the funds were allocated to benefit the entire community, not specific organizations. I don't know how in-depth Madam Mayor wants me to get in on this, but I guess one of my questions was, you know, there's certain things in here, town hall window replacements, I don't know how that benefits the entire community versus a specific organization. The rental assistance seems to benefit specific organizations, AKA specific either communities or people versus the entire community. So I'm still struggling with some of the concerns that you're having with regards to implementing a small business grant fund. So if you could just kind of illuminate me a little bit more as to how some of these programs benefit the entire community, like versus a specific organization?
Right, so if you want to... I mean, not every single one is directed to benefit the entire community. That being said, for example, the windows in the town hall, the entire community would have to pay additional tax funds in the event that those windows were not done through ARPA dollars. The entire community would have to pay additional tax funds to actually get those windows replaced at some point. So that's the thinking behind that, that type of reasoning. The same goes for most of the other ones there. I also provided all of you with actual, the actual treasury guidance on your table for all of you to peruse and maybe help you get to sleep at night if you're interested. So, you know, I would feel if... I would recommend you take the time to read through it and see the different ways that all those projects do fit into those guidances. If you are interested, if you take a look at the town website, when we put together the ARPA funds page, each of those projects is identified with a narrative. Additionally, in association with that narrative, is a direct citation from this guidance at the Department of Treasury as to where and how it fits in with the actual guidance from the treasury.
Thank you. And I guess my last follow-up would be, I mean, some of the things that I would be curious with regards to East Windsor is like what are their criterias of their tracking programs? How are they making the determinations of whether their small business application is supported by these COVID funds? And I'm not sure if I really fully understood that in the documentation that was here. Were there additional conversations with East Windsor with regards to how they came by creating these documents? How they're implementing it? What kind of businesses they have been successful in giving this out to? I guess, I don't know, maybe we can ask them to come to a meeting? I don't know if we can do that. I'm just curious how they're doing it, and I didn't really find as much meat in here as I would like to see if it's feasible and possible to do something like this.
Sure, there's a... The Town of East Windsor has a report on their webpage...
Okay.
That shows, and I'll send the link to the council when I get the chance to sit down at the computer. It shows all of the projects that were proposed and... Or not proposed, but the ones that were accepted by the town and approved and then funded. And I believe there's some additional narrative on there about how they're implementing it.
How what? I didn't hear that.
There's additional narrative in the beginning as to how they're implementing their program.
Counselor Paterna?
Counselor Lydecker's not, I don't know.
Counselor Lydecker, are you finished?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, thanks for the report, by the way. This sheds a lot more light on what people are doing. The only question I have is that I know about East Windsor. There are no other towns that are attempting to do this?
Not that I've seen or heard of. I mean, certainly the Town of East Windsor has made a lot of play out of their program.
Okay. I just thought if there was another one, it's nice to do another comparison if we could find one.
Yeah, I know, I did have a conversation with Counselor Kozakowski about the Town of Middletown, but doing some further research, the program that they actually did was not with ARPA funds. So I have not been able to find any other program similar to that with ARPA funds.
All right, well, thank you.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a few questions for the town manager. First, I want to thank you for putting together the memo and the draft application and the grant agreement. I can appreciate the effort it takes to put those documents together and for the benefit of assisting this discussion. My first question was already answered. So I know that there is a tremendous effort needed to verify compliance with the federal requirements. Would you see the town performing this compliance verification, or would you see the town passing that burden to the grant awardees?
I don't believe we would be able to actually pass it to the grant awardees. The federal government will be looking at the town to provide responses to their auditor.
Okay. For one of the town projects that you have listed, posted on the website, you can talk about even any one of them, how much time, staff time and resources would you estimate would be due to verify compliance with just one of those projects?
They're reporting quarterly to the finance department in preparation for when we do get audited by the federal government. So an actual time estimate, I couldn't even give it to you, but it is quite significant.
Okay, and that's just for... And that would be for each project?
That's for each project. I saw the emails go out today, actually, from the finance department requesting their quarterly updates.
Okay, so if we were to implement this type of program and we granted, let's say, 10 businesses an award, each one of those projects would be our responsibility or your responsibility to...
No, it's staff.
To verify compliance.
If you made it our responsibility, yes. We would have to reach out to those 10 businesses and hopefully they would respond.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, for putting this together and giving us some great bedtime reading. Appreciate that. And moving on, we are now under 13, and we need a... Where are we putting in 13A and B? Help me. I mean, 11A and B? Yeah, 11A and B need to be moved to new business, and where are they going? After 11B, I mean, 13B? Oh, 12B, I'm sorry, 12B. Okay, 12B, I'm sorry. Yep. No, it's 12 now instead of 13? Because 13 is new business. So it should go under new business? Yes, okay. So it would now turn into 11... I mean, we would take 11A and B here at this point? Okay. So moving on to, I have nothing to move me here. Okay, no resolution, but we're here. So we need to go back to that page.
Madam Mayor, what did I miss when I was recusing myself?
I know, I'm confused too. Give me two seconds to get you caught up. Look back at our 11A and B. They now are under new business here, so it falls in after the 13... Before 13. So it falls in after the 13, before 13B. They would fall in there. Is that what you're saying, Ms. Perry? I can't hear you from over there.
It was my understanding that it was going to be moved to the beginning of new business, which would be now.
Thank you. Okay, so we just go back to read the whole thing from the first reading of 11AA on page two. 11AA, and that would be Counselor Gamble would read all of 11AA, please.
Thank you. Resolution appointing Stephanie Weintraub to the Public Building Commission and postponing consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Stephanie Weintraub to the Public Building Commission for a term ending November 30, 2025, to fill the expired term of Carol Kelly and postpone consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a second? Seeing a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Kozakowski.
Okay, so I think we should be supporting this, this resolution, and I want to express my support to appoint Ms. Weintraub to the Public Building Commission. I don't understand why this is being contested on a commission that has absolutely no regulatory authority. Ms. Weintraub seems to be like a capable and energetic individual that has gotten bit by the same volunteer bug that has bitten all of us at some point in time. I don't want to get in the way of her providing service to our community. It's not like we have a waitlist of people wanting to sign up for these boards and, boards and commissions. And I want to encourage and enable those who put themselves out, out there offering their help. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other comments? Counselor Kabaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to echo the support of Counselor Kozakowski. I know Stephanie. I know that, you know, she has done very good work on Human Relations Committee. She is a very dedicated, hard worker, which, having served on the Public Building Commission, I know how important that is in this, in this, on this committee. Therefore, I'm offering my full support to Stephanie.
Thank you. And Counselor Gamble?
Thank you. I'd also like to offer my support for Stephanie Weintraub. I cannot say, you know, anything more about, you know, Stephanie that hasn't already been said tonight. I've not known her for as long as a lot of the people in this room have known her for, that have said all those wonderful things about her. But I, from what I do know of her, over this past fall, we spent time together, you know, out and about in town campaigning together, and I have firsthand experience that the things that were said about her tonight are 100% true, and I fully support her in, in being on the building, Public Building Commission. Thanks.
Thank you. Want any other comments? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Any opposed? Roll call, please. Counselor Evans?
No.
Counselor Lydecker?
No.
Counselor Gamble?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Nope.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor King?
No.
Counselor Kabaski?
Yes.
Counselor Paterna?
No.
And Mayor Pendleton?
No.
Okay. Count, please. Six yeses and three nos. No, backwards. Oh, wait, okay. Three yeses, six nos. Oh, three yeses, I'm sorry. No worries, we got you, I got you. And six nos. Thank you. So the motion does not carry. Moving on to 11AB, Counselor Gamble.
Thank you. Resolution appointing Richard Balboni as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission and postponing consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Richard Balboni as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending December 1st, 2025, to fill the expired term of Megan Powell and postpone consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Kabaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This appointment of Mr. Balboni, to me, makes perfect sense in that he, coming from the financial background that he does, right now, we have nobody on planning and zoning who comes with any kind of financial background. Coming from that world myself, I know what it's meant on the different commissions that I've served on, it's been helpful. It's helped me in making decisions on these various commissions. And so I think that's a very important aspect that's lacking on the group right now, and Mr. Balboni can provide that. The other point I wanted to make is Mr. Balboni has served as town selectman for a number of years. It doesn't make any common sense to sit here and say, well, he can serve as a selectman, but he can't sit as an alternate on planning and zoning. I don't quite understand that. The thinking makes no sense to me. And so based upon that, I give Mr. Balboni my full support.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Kozakowski?
Yes, again, I don't know why these seats are being contested, and we didn't get the benefit of getting any comments of why any councilors voted no for Stephanie, but I hope we would give Mr. Balboni the courtesy of justification for, for the votes that we taking. I do want to offer my support for Mr. Balboni for the appointment of the alternate seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission does have regulatory authority, and each seat is very important. Mr. Balboni is a lifelong resident, which is clearly a choice to be just that, a lifelong resident. I don't want to get in the way of somebody that wants to contribute to our community as an alternate seat. An alternate seat on the P&amp;Z is a good place for someone who may be new to planning and zoning, but finds it interesting and feels like they can contribute. It's a great spot to learn the ropes. Each, each member of the P&amp;Z should bring, brings background and skillset and personality to the commission, and which hopefully would make a dynamic group, you know, assemble a dynamic group to lead the town in that way. The town has changed a lot physically over the last 20 years, and I believe that Mr. Balboni will fight to preserve what makes South Windsor special to, to our other long-term residents. Thank you.
Counselor Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I did not think this meeting was going to go this way, to be honest. You know, when we adopted the agenda to tonight's meeting, I, I thought that it was going to work the way the agenda was laid out. I did not see this getting pulled from the consent agenda, that honestly, maybe that's my nativity, and I certainly know how these things work, but, you know, for the reason why it was pulled was because there was public input. It doesn't make any sense to me. So if there was no public input, does that mean there would not, it would not have been pulled off the consent agenda? To me, that, that seems like a poor reason to pull it off the consent agenda, because people were supporting the people that we put forward for this, for these two important positions. I think, you know, in the, we've done similar things in the past. People who have been not voted in to their, to what they were running for, eventually got appointed through their committees, which is the process that we follow. We've supported Democratic positions in the past. You've supported ours in the past, so again, I'm not sure where this is coming from. So it's a long way to say, I, you know, I do support Rick, and I, and I, and I hope that you guys can see the benefit of having Rick Balboni as an alternate on planning and zoning. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Any opposed? Roll call, please.
No.
Counselor Lydecker? Counselor Gamble? Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor King?
No.
Counselor Kabaski?
Yes.
Counselor Paterna?
No.
And Mayor Pendleton?
No.
Okay, and the motion does not carry. Moving on to 13B. Resolution setting a time and a place for a public hearing to receive-
What's wrong with you, P.
Sit it, excuse me, we need, excuse me, excuse me. We need, excuse me, excuse me. Order, please. We're in the middle of a meeting. Thank you.
Why should I listen to you? You don't listen to us? Why should we listen to you?
So this is 13B. Counselor Kabaski?
Resolution- 13B?
Yes.
Resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the transfer of $77,500 from the capital and non-recurring expenditure account. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the transfer of $77,500 from the capital and non-recurring expenditures account to the hazard mitigation capital account to prepare the preliminary design plan and cost estimate.
Is there a second? Any discussion on this? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? None, the motion carries. Now, Mr. Maniscalco, this 13C is, came up from the last meeting because it was tabled, now it needs to be postponed to the January 18th meeting, because this is the resolution that we are approving after the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So can I get a, can I get a motion to postpone? 13C?
Motion to postpone 13C.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, 13D. And, oh, that's me. Okay. Resolution acknowledging January 6, 2022, as United Democracy Day in the Town of South Windsor. Whereas the South Windsor Town Council voted on February 1st, 2021, to recognize our community's support for democracy through, throughout South Windsor. And whereas democracy is the cornerstone of our laws for all our communities around the country, and it is our democracy that unites us as a nation. And whereas the Town of South Windsor and its leaders are committed to guiding, fostering, and demonstrating peaceful and respectful communications among each other, and in keeping the ideals of our country alive with, within our community. And whereas the partnership with all of our residents that keeps the ideals of our country and our community alive. Now therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby commits to guiding, fostering, and demonstrating united democracy throughout our term in honor of South Windsor United Democracy Day, January 6, 2022. Is there any discussion concerning? Counselor Kabaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I find it highly ironic that after we've heard from the group of people that were sitting out here tonight, and their full support for Mr. Balboni and Ms. Weintraub, and nobody coming up and speaking tonight against them, and they get voted down, and now we're going to sit here and push Democracy Day, where we heard the full support of the folks that were here. I think to sit here and pass this tonight would be extremely hypocritical, and therefore, I will not be voting for it.
Any other comments? Not seeing any? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kozakowski?
Yes, I did have some statements prepared, but after this disgusting display of politics, I find, I also find it extremely ironic to be adopting a resolution promoting Democracy Day. So I'll be voting against this resolution.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor King?
I just have a point of order, and if I might, just a point of personal privilege.
Absolutely, get rid of him.
So I, I do believe that in light of full transparency, let me be clear. When we appoint or put people in office, we don't do it haphazardly. As members, especially on this town council, when we have public input, we are not allowed to say a word. We are not allowed to have conversation at that particular time with the people that come to have public input. As such, and this is my point of personal privilege, as a town councilman, I have been blasted by several people that have been put up to be appointed. I have not said a word, because that is what I said that I hold true to not do. Even when comments were made about, and no one knows this, but having a deaf sister, and being told that a mask mandate affects that. I wasn't allowed to comment on that. Personal privilege. I was at the Save the Streets, and I'm going to be transparent in the reason that I am turning down Stephanie, Ms. Weintraub.
Point of order, we are-
Yes. This is my personal privilege, personal privilege. Thank you. As a deputy mayor, I do have personal privilege, and I think that rightfully so, my counselors, my fellow counselors have asked, and so I think it's only right that you have my reasoning. My concern is making sure that we have individuals that are not going to be argumentative with our town, or even people outside of our town. Unfortunately, I have not witnessed that. I recognize that. I could have easily just said no. Right? But as a point of personal privilege, and as a point of making sure that people recognize and don't say why or why not, you can hear it directly from me. I was not comfortable, and my fellow counselors were not there, except for Counselor Kabaski, in the dialogue that Ms. Weintraub had with somebody that was outside of our community as a representative of South Windsor. You can go to the video. It was back and forth, back and forth, and the comment was made. We did not have any problems until Black Lives Matter got involved. I didn't say a word. There were posts made that said, you know, why didn't deputy mayor say anything? It wasn't my place at that time. Because you've asked the question, that is my reason. I am not comfortable at this time, and times change. I'm the first to admit it. That she recognizes that in these types of positions, you don't, you can't go back and forth. It was inappropriate at that time, and so I have my concern about that. And that is why I voted it down. I thought that, again, in transparency and as a point of personal privilege, that you needed to hear it directly from me. Anybody can go to the video and see that that's exactly what happened, and for me to appoint her at this time, I'm not comfortable with. And hopefully, you respect my decision as such, directly coming from my mouth. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Counselor Erica?
Thank you.
Evans, there you go.
I just want to address specifically, something brought up is why people feel they don't want to be in support of this resolution related to the-
Speak up, please.
I just wanted to bring up, you know, as far as the mention of why some people may not support this resolution, 13D. For me, in regards to hearing the community, for me, my, the voices that I hear are not just in this one evening. It is throughout the weeks leading up to meetings, once people see an agenda, discussions and phone calls that I receive. So my decision, without getting into any specifics, is based on a bigger audience than just those who attended this evening. And I have to take all of those people into consideration, not just the loud few. Thank you.
So we're in discussion here for the 13D. Is there any comments on 13D? I have some. I like to say that appointments that are brought forward are not from councilors. Appointments that are brought forward are from town committees. And so councilors to sit here and not understand why other councilors aren't voting for something is, is, is their personal, it's not being, they're not nominations from councilors. We're up here to do a job for the best interest of the community. And I'm acknowledging January 6- And I'm acknowledging January 6th here as United Democracy Day, because it's stated in the resolution when it was first created. Last year on January 6th, we had, right after that on February 1st, we had a resolution that states that we have to acknowledge United Democracy Day every year. That's from a past resolution. So I'm following through with that, and I can read you the February 1st resolution design, designating January 6th of each year as South Windsor United Democracy Day. Each year, it has to be acknowledged, so I'm following through with that resolution. I'd like to say that last year on January 6th, our country experienced an event that went against the ideals set out as the basis upon which America was founded. The insurrection at our nation's Capitol was such that it caused strong emotions across the country, and South Windsor with no exception. We as a council have heard from our residents the desire to see a town government that works in unity and for the betterment of our community. As such, January 6th was designated as United Democracy Day in South Windsor in an effort to demonstrate the council's commitment to working together and promoting the openness and unity that will benefit our town and its people. Although what occurs in Washington, Hartford, and other communities around the country is beyond the auspices of South Windsor Town Council, the happenings within our community are in the vested interest of each counselor. By running for and accepting the position of town counselor based on the votes of our community, we have each committed to representing all citizens of South Windsor. Democracy is definition, by definition, is a government by the people, one in which the supreme power is vested in the people and exercised by them directly or indirectly through a system of representation involving free elections. We hold these values true and would never withhold the true representation of our citizens from their right to vote and have their voices be heard. We heard the communities ask for a council that represents their wishes and commit to fostering the desires of our residents in a positive way by working together for our term. In examining the word united, I found synonyms to include agreeable, amicable, compatible, congenial, frictionless, harmonious, kindred, unanimous. And although I expect at times we may experience some friction, or come away without a unanimous decision, right? I also want to set the bar that each act with intention, that each of us, that we each act with intention to work together in an agreeable, amicable, and congenial way. In the two months that this council has been seated, we have demonstrated that we are able to work together. We have each seen it firsthand. I think of the way that Counselor Kozakowski, Gamble, and Lidecker collaborated to construct a meaningful amendment to a resolution mid-meeting. Counselor Kowalski has worked tirelessly on the school referendum projects through his role on the Board of Ed, Public Building Commission, and through his effort on the town council during the budget process, which I truly appreciate, the numbers guy. Each counselor has demonstrated a willingness to reach across the parties in a positive way, affecting the future of our town. And a, and a prime example of the nine of us working together was a collaborative decision-making and the willingness to compromise in regard to best representing the towns on our boards, commissions, and liaisons, and that was a fabulous example of how we all worked together to get there, to work together. Each of those small collaborative events has demonstrated the willingness of each and all of us counselors to unite and work together towards the betterment of South Windsor. My hope for this council and for our community is that we each raise the bar to work together for our town, as we have committed to do by the acceptance of our oath as town counselors. We as a town can only move forward when each commit to uniting in the name of democracy by working together in a positive and collaborative way. South Windsor will remain a great place to live, work, learn, and play in this we will accomplish together during our term in the next two years, I hope. So that was my statements concerning United Democracy Day, that was created, that we have to acknowledge by resolution. So any other comments? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Roll call, please.
Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Lidecker? Counselor Gamble? Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Kozakowski?
No.
Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Counselor Kowalski?
No.
Counselor Paterna?
Yes.
Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
We have six yeses and three noes.
And the motion does not care, it does carry, thank you. And now moving on, we've done E, now we are on F. Counselor Lidecker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving a refund of taxes to 10 South Windsor taxpayers. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of property taxes to 10 South Windsor taxpayers, the total of said refunds being $8,170.50, and as more fully described on attached exhibit A.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any opposed? Not seeing any? The motion carries. Passion of, passage of ordinance at number 14, we have none. Public input for any matter, number 15. For input on any matter shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lecturer and give their name and address. Speaker shall avoid personal attacks and impunging or, imputing or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may speak and address the council, and the speaker shall limit their time to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak to any item on any matter? Turn the microphone on, please. Thank you.
Testing. Check, check.
You're good.
Got excited, I heard you say 30 minutes, so I was like, I gotta prepare some more materials.
No, not you, Dan, not you, thanks.
I gotta say, this is the most awkward town council meeting I've been to since ATV Gate. I'm not sure, we'll figure out a name for it, but what I'd like to read to you is the International Day of Democracy. The UN has marked September 15th as the International Day of Democracy. On this day, the UN urges all governments to promote and uphold the principles of democracy. If you recall earlier, I spoke about how this is September 15th every year, right? This year, it happens to be in between town council meetings, right? This year, you're observing your United Democracy Day after a town council meeting and before the next one. This is, again, such a partisan issue that you're just creating when you don't have to do. There already is a day on the calendar, there really is. I'd actually just encourage you, just to save some time, because I'm fired up right now, to actually go to the UN website and actually read up about it. You might learn a thing or two.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any other comments?
Hello, Corinne Bordwa. I'd like to make it clear that I do my best to be firm in my stance and also respectful to everyone in this room. I would like to commend you, Deputy Mayor King, for having the courage to speak your mind. I wish the timing was a little bit different, that you spoke about it, you know, when Counselor Kozakowski asked people to address any concerns that they had with the appointments, but you did offer a valid reason on why you had a concern with Stephanie, and I appreciate you sharing that with everyone. Also, my apologies to you if you did feel directly offended by, by comment about the deaf community and masks. I still stand by what I said. I'm sorry if you felt offended, like I said, but I know deaf people too, and I do know how the mask mandates did impact them. So I'm speaking from a different point of view, I'm sorry if people don't like my point of view, but that's not going to stop me from sharing it. Like I said, I'm going to do my best to be respectful. I am very, very disappointed in the lack of courage and courtesy and willingness to express your concerns for the rest of you who voted against appointments today. Not only did I ask for you guys to share why you would be voting against anyone who was appointed today, but Counselor Kozakowski asked for that same respect, and nobody was willing to do it in the time given before, the discussions before the vote. I think that's an incredible lack of transparency. I think it's a real shame, and voting against an appointment, to my knowledge, has not happened in the last 20 years. So that's what I was told.
Okay, okay.
As far as I was told or informed, it had not happened in the last 20 years. So, to my knowledge, there was a new precedent sent today, and I think it's unfortunate. I'd like to address some concerns with the town manager, Michael. It was upsetting to me during my first public input, you walked out of the town council chambers. On December 6th, during a town council meeting, I had an email replied to me, a non pertinent email, that was replied to me during town council meeting hours. And now today, while making my first public input, once again, you are on your phone, and people come here to speak about things that are important to them, and I would just, you know, I appreciate the rest of you who are willing to sit here and listen right now, but it'd be appreciated if you did as well. I would lastly like to just reiterate my concern about the townwide mask mandate. I did go through the wording, once again, on executive order 13A, and then I also looked up the definition of the private sector. It is the ownership and control that changes the difference between the private sector and the public sector. The executive order gives the town manager, businesses, and nonprofits the right to apply a universal mask mandate in settings under their ownership and/or control. Like I said, I did pass this by my attorney, who is a town attorney for another town, and he was shocked when he actually sat down and read the wording. When I first brought the matter up to him, he said, oh no, it's in the executive order, that's just how it is. And I said, well, can you go through the executive order, you know, line by line with me, so that I can really understand how I'm misinterpreting it? And when he read it, his eyes widened, he's like, wow, yeah, according to the wording, it doesn't sound like the town managers do have that authority. So, once again, I would just urge you to read through that and not put the town in jeopardy for legal action from business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? On any item, on any matter? Anyone else? Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else, moving on. Item 16, communications from the council.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. You know, I'd like to clear something up. As recently as 2020, there was an appointment being made to the Human Relations Commission, and all the Republican members of the town council voted against that nomination. So misinformation is really being shared a lot in this room tonight. As recently as 2020, all Republican counselors voted against this nomination. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Moving on to item 17. Moving on to item 18, is there an adjournment, please? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any? The motion carries, thank you.